Hello, I'm Mila Kumpalova. I am a senior reporter at Chalk Beach, Chicago. Welcome to our inaugural School Board Candidate Forums. These are conversations with the people running in Chicago's historic first school board race. Welcome to anyone tuning in live on YouTube. If you have questions for the candidates, you can type them into the comments and we'll do our best to get to them. We're very happy to welcome the candidates in District 2. I'll introduce them just briefly. We have Maggie Colerton Hooper. She is a mom, advocate, public servant, and lifelong Chicagoan. She has more than 20 years of experience advocating for equitable education policy, eight years serving on a local school council, and a career in education in the nonprofit sector. If she is elected, she believes she will be the first person with disabilities to serve on Chicago's Board of Education. Ebony DeBarry is the manager for education initiatives at the social justice community organization One Northside, where she runs the Women of Color table and oversees the parent mentor program. Ebony has lived in Rogers Park her entire life. She attended Chicago Public Schools as a student at Gale Elementary and later at Sullivan High School, and she later decided to teach in the district. Bruce Leon is a fifth-generation Chicagoan, father of four daughters, grandfather of six, small-business owner and philanthropist. He founded Tandem HR in 1997 with two employees and sold it in 2020, when it had 160 employees and worked with 600 Chicago companies. Bruce is a graduate of the University of Wisconsin-Madison and has been married to his wife Cheryl for 34 years. And Kate Doyle is a nonprofit leader, former special education teacher, and the mom of a future CPS student. After her time spent in a public school classroom, Kate went on to work in corporate social impact and to found Kindwork, a nonprofit bringing tech education to low-income youth. She also serves as the vice president of her neighborhood organization. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for being here. We will start with a quick icebreaker question, starting with you, Maggie. Let us know what your favorite and your least favorite subject in school was.
Thank you so much for having us all here. I didn't really have a least favorite subject in school. I'm a pretty big nerd. I like learning quite a lot and being in curious spaces, so I loved almost every class I've ever taken. The one constant and favorite class was always art. It was always a really important creative channel for me and, I think, helped me build other critical thinking skills as well. Overall, my education was a little challenging, being a person with disabilities who went undiagnosed. So that's a big part of why I'm running, obviously, so that kids can actually enjoy and embrace their favorite subjects and not feel discouraged or come to those realizations that they are just not that bright, which I think is really unfortunate that any of us has had to sort of experience that in our lives.
Thank you. Ebony?
I would say I loved school as a kid. I loved everything about it. Probably gym was very challenging to me. I had a very strict gym teacher in my elementary school career, and that was difficult. But in the classroom, I loved exploring new ideas. I loved hearing other people's ideas and thinking about whether I agreed with them or not. I loved reading out loud. I loved writing. I loved expressing myself, and I loved hearing other people express themselves. I'm an only child, so, you know, it was learning, and it was friendship, and it was guidance. It was all the things wrapped up into one. History has always fascinated me. If I read a lot, it's historical fiction. You know, I think that having an elementary school in my neighborhood that supplied me with art, library, gym, you know, all the classes that you look forward to in going to school has really supplied me with the energy to advocate for children to have every single good thing that I had at every neighborhood school we have. So, yeah, I'm kind of a nerd too in that. I love my teachers. You know, there was just everything about school was so fun for me, you know? Who wants to be at home watching TV all day when you can finish your work fast and talk to your friends?
All right, thank you. Bruce?
Thank you, Mila, for having me on. So for me, it's pretty easy. I was a history buff. I got inspired mostly with American history. Civil War history was really my favorite. Abraham Lincoln became an inspiration for me, and I think that sort of guided me even in my newly-found political career, the way he built consensus, the way he worked with all the different people in his parties and his opponent's parties. So that's always been sort of a guiding principle for me. And I've actually been visited a lot of Civil War sites and become kind of a buff. That was always, that was sort of taken from my first history teacher in elementary school. My least favorite subject was easy. That was, I'm really bad with languages. I tried Spanish. My name was Jorge because they don't have any B names in Spanish. And to this day, people who know me from elementary school still tell me Jorge, and they laugh because I was a very bad, I just didn't have that capability of languages. It's always been difficult for me. But history was fun, and I had some great teachers as well.
Thank you. Kate, how about you?
So echoing the major nerd sentiment that we have up here, it sounds like I loved school. I'm a proud public school graduate, kindergarten through university. You know, in many ways, my public school was really my safe space when my family was really struggling. And I had one teacher in particular, Mrs. Knack, who was my high school English teacher, who just was the most amazing teacher of all time. She, you know, she taught me to write. She taught me about critical theory. She really let us, as young people, lead. And she guided our learning, but she didn't lecture us. And so I always appreciated her approach, and she's my inspiration for becoming a teacher. There wasn't a subject, I think, that I didn't enjoy. I will say I was really into drama as well, and I never made the musicals because I am a terrible singer. So I was backstage for the musicals.
Well, so it turns out we have five self-professed nerds sitting here today, so I think, oh, you're not counting yourself.
No, I did, oh, you counted yourself. Okay.
Yes, that's right. 100%. So I think this should go fairly smoothly from here on out. So we're going to get to some of the issues, and we have quite a bit to cover today. As you might have noticed, it's been an eventful few months in Chicago Public Schools, so I wanted to first chat a little bit about the issues of today. And we'll start with a couple of just yes or no questions, and then I'll give you a chance to tell viewers a little bit more on your position. But starting with just yes or no, and we'll still start this time with you, Maggie, but we'll switch it up later. Would you keep Pedro Martinez in the role of CPS CEO?
Yes, right now, I would. I don't know enough to answer.
Impedic yes.
Kate?
Yes, I think overall, he's been effective. I think there's room for improvement, but my assessment is he's doing a good job overall.
Okay. Just yes or no at this point, but we'll get to more thoughts on that soon. And just one more yes or no question. Would you support taking out a high-interest loan to cover operating costs? And this time, I'll start with you, Ebony.
No.
Absolutely not.
No.
No.
Okay. I'll give you 30 seconds to tell me a little bit more about why yes or, in most cases, no on actually either one of those questions. And I'll start with Bruce this time.
So my background, as you said, is Tandem HR. I've done HR for over 600 companies for 30 years. The way that this has been handled with Pedro has been almost, almost like a banana republic. And it's embarrassing, the fact that his personnel files were released to WBEZ last week. I mean, he's, there's ways to handle organizational structure and to handle professionally as a board, how you deal with your CEO and with your C-level people. And I believe that he's been mishandled. And truthfully, he has a major lawsuit if he is fired. And I think part of the reason that Old Board resigned is because they might have been liable for some of that as well. So I just think that there's a way to handle things professionally. I'm an experienced board member. I've served on public boards. This has never, ever happened before. And I, you know, from that perspective, and as far as the high-interest rate loan, I wouldn't let my kids take out a high-interest rate loan, let alone a $350 million loan for a school.
Kate, what do you think?
Yeah, so I think first and foremost, it's been a really trying couple of months for CPS families, for CPS staff members, and I think that stability is needed. So for that reason alone, I'm in favor of keeping CEO Pedro Martinez because it's the beginning of a school year. We've just released a five-year strategic plan. You know, there's a lot going on, and so keeping him in place is going to help ensure that stability, especially as we move to seating an elected board as well. I support his decision to say no to the, to the high-interest loan. I think that's, it's short-sighted, and, you know, part of our work on the board will be really thinking about the long-term success of CPS. And, you know, I think that Pedro Martinez saying no to the high-interest loan was a sound move and one that I support.
Maggie, we'll go to you next.
Yeah, so as, as far as the CEO is concerned, I really, I don't think we know enough information about his performance as the leader of the school district. I personally, at our school, with my kids and with other families that I work with as an advocate, have seen a lot of problems, right? So understanding the dynamics there and understanding whether he is the end-all, be-all, what work he has made to improve those areas are all things that I would want to know more about. I would not terminate anyone in the middle of a contract negotiation. I think it sets a really negative precedent. I think it's disruptive and irresponsible. So I'm glad he opposes the loan, and I think that through, having continuity through the close of a contract negotiation would be ideal.
Ebony, what are your thoughts?
Through working with schools and principals in my day job, I know that principals have been preparing for the shortfall for months. And it's really hard to distinguish in leadership across the board who dropped the ball and not preparing for this moment. And so I say I don't know enough because I think there's a lot of shared responsibility. When we knew the COVID funds were going to end at a certain point, principals were preparing, so why wasn't else, everyone else prepared?
Great, thank you for these responses. We'll move on to a couple of questions about the district's budget. In its most recent budget, Chicago Public Schools projected at least $500 million in deficits in every year for the next four years, and that's before any of the costs of a teacher's and principal's contract are factored in. How would you balance Chicago Public Schools' nearly $10 billion budget? We'll start with Kate this time.
Yeah, so first things first, I, I think when it comes to balancing the budget, we need to acknowledge that we're a district that's facing a lot of needs. We serve a primarily low-income population. We have a lot of English language learners, a lot of students with disabilities, students in temporary living situations, and all of those students require additional support in order to give them the best possible high-quality education. And so I think that we need to exhaust every revenue source possible. And so I think we do that, one, by collaborating with Springfield to accelerate our evidence-based funding. And I think collaboration is key there. I think we've typically gone down and demanded, and I think we need to change the tone and really show where the deficits are in our budget and how that additional funding is going to support our students in need. I also think that we need to find a way to reduce some of the pension burden that CPS faces unlike other districts, downstate and suburban school districts, and that would help make us whole. And lastly, I think there are efficiencies on the expenditure side. I mean, we really need to look at the return on investment for our students across all of our contracts and be ready to make tough decisions to balance our budget.
Maggie, what do you think?
Yeah, so this is where I sort of get very excited. I could talk about legacy and normal pension contributions and the state's obligation to Chicago's pension funds versus the rest of the state district funds, but I'm told that is rather boring and not that appealing to the average voter. I think it's really exciting to have so many people now starting to talk about some of these policies. I have an incredibly robust policy page up on my website. I have from day one. I think we need both immediate, concrete policies that will fill holes as well as long-term strategic goals. I've been down in Springfield lobbying, filing witness, filing witness slips, and speaking with legislators on CPS issues for years now. I have established relationships down there, and I think I'm a really trusted voice on CPS budgeting and policy because I understand it so thoroughly. And there are short-term fixes. If we were to merge or fund pensions at the state level, we would have $640 million right away, this year and every year going forward. So it's not that the solutions don't exist, it's that there hasn't been an election, there hasn't been a public dialogue. People haven't had to be accountable to these issues, so I'm really excited to see this elected school board coming to fruition.
Yes, there's many, many resolutions we could have in place. I think, of course, the state owes us more, but I would also petition the federal government. I think that our houselessness population doesn't get what they deserve here in Chicago. Our immigrant crisis wasn't responded to appropriately. I think that there's a lot of money in environmental pots right now, so we could upgrade our schools pretty steadily with the green new dollars. I think that there's going to be progressive revenue is something I've been working towards my whole career. And so, you know, we have to get billionaires and corporations to pay their fair share in the state. I will not give up that idea. It saved Minnesota's public schools, and I think we need to take a point from them and absolutely do the same.
Bruce?
So I've served on many boards, as I said before, and I think balancing a budget is one of the key obligations of good governance. We have to understand that right now CPS gets about $30,000 per student. Just to give you in context, Nutria, which has a pretty robust school district, you know, is about $19,000. Now, I understand we have a lot of issues with immigration that's been brought up here and, and other things that cause us to have an imbalance, but I think what, what caused the Springfield fiasco six months ago was that the mayor went down and just demanded. I'm, as I said before, my, my idea of leadership is consensus leadership, meaning you go down there and you ask for money, but you also say, here's what we're going to do to cut, and, or we're going to do to make ends meet, we're going to be a partnership. And I think that's what they were looking for. You know, we have 43,000 staff at CPS. We have 20,000 that are non-teaching jobs. So we have to, you know, we increased by 7,000 since, since COVID, even though the student population decreased. So I think that we have to look at the overall picture. I would say on the revenue source, yes, state does owe some money. There is some potential for federal money, but I do, I do think that the taxpayers of Chicago, in terms of the homeowners, have just experienced, in my district, because I'm a community man in the 50th Ward, and I've been, I've been seeing what's been going on in my ward, they've all gotten 25% to 30% tax increases. They cannot withstand more tax increases on their homes. People will lose their homes. So I think just to go back and continue taxing people's private residences will only cause people to move to the suburbs. So we have to really come up with creative solutions, and that's going to be pain on both sides, meaning look for ways to save money, look for ways to get money. And I think if you do that, we, in collaboration, we can figure out a good, a good path here.
All right, thank you all. I have a couple more of those yes or no questions, having to do with the budget. The first one is, do you think the city should pick up the payment of $175 million that's due this year for pension costs for some non-teaching staff in CPS?
Yes.
Should the city pick up that expense? Ebony?
I think it should be a shared responsibility, so some of it.
I think it is an obligation of both the city and the school district, and we have to figure out a way to, to make it equitable, yeah.
I think it should be a shared responsibility as well.
And one more yes or no. Do you think the state, and I know some of you have already touched on that, but I'll ask you to go around and answer nevertheless. Do you think the state should provide CPS more funding?
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, I think the state should be a partner.
Yes.
Okay. And then I'll ask you to elaborate a little bit. I know some of you already spoke about that, so maybe just briefly, if you could flesh out your responses. How would you go about working with the state and other elected officials to secure more funding for CPS?
Yeah, so, oh, sorry, am I supposed to start?
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry. So I think that, again, this is about collaboration and partnership, but it's also about understanding the way that this functions and the way that bills move through Springfield, the way that committees listen in and approve or move through different legislation to the floor, understanding that it's not just Chicago legislators making all of these decisions, but there is an entire Senate and an entire House of Representatives that is from all over the state. So it can be challenging to get all of those things done. I think Chicago legislators underestimate their power to really articulate what is important, and I hope that going forward, that we will be able to partner with them and help them strengthen the case that they're making and help clarify those things so that they can be successful in lobbying for more dollars for Chicago.
Ebony?
I think we already discussed that poor children, children of color, children who are immigrated recently, they need more investment, you know? It's more expensive to educate children with extra needs, special need children, they're more expensive to educate. So I think we need to be creative about how we look at the state budget. I think a lot of those supports already are being funded, and we need to figure out how to include community services into our schools in a way that will take care of our children and also is already paid for, you know? Our children need counseling, they need therapy, they need tutoring, they need mentoring. A lot of that is already funded in our community. So how do we collaborate and bring those services to the children?
Bruce?
I think in talking to some of the state legislators last week, especially last night, I was able to speak to two state senators. I think what's going on right now, the way the whole situation was handled with the old board and the new board and the press conference, only makes legislators more weary of what's going on in Chicago Public Schools. I think if we can show stability and we can show a plan that shows on both sides, cutting and making things more efficient, in whatever way that means, as well as we need extra revenue, as Ebony said, for immigrants, for special need students, and you come up with a game plan that shows, it's like a child that comes to you for a loan, you know, you want to see, when are you going to pay me back and how are you going to, what are you going to do to make sure that this can be done? And just somebody that comes and says, I need money, it's very difficult, right? And they have a fiduciary responsibility to other schools in the state, not just the city schools. So I think it needs to be done in a, in a collaborative way that shows that it maybe could be something that can be just a short-term help, and eventually the school district can get back on a more financially sound footing.
Kate?
So I think a lot of great points have been made about how we do this. I think that coming with a plan is really important and hasn't been the case over the last few months. I think that why we're seeing pushback from our representatives in Springfield is because they feel talked at and they feel like demands are being made, and instead, we need to approach this in a fully collaborative fashion because these are all our kids, these are our students. And so I think we also need to link arms with other school districts that are also underfunded according to the evidence-based funding model because I think, to Maggie's point, making sure that this is a statewide issue and that school districts across the state that need additional funding to support their students are getting it as well. And the root of this, right, is making sure that our kids have access to high-quality education and services. And so I think always bringing the conversation back to that is incredibly important.
All right, thank you. Next, we have a few questions about school choice, starting with a yes and no one, and then I'll give you a chance to elaborate a bit, and this time, we'll start with Ebony. So yes or no, do you believe any of Chicago Public Schools' admission policies should change?
Yes.
Bruce?
I, I think for a general statement, some yes, some no.
Kate?
By admissions policies, are we talking specifically about admissions to selective enrollment in magnet schools?
Correct, yes.
So yes, I think we can strengthen equitable access to those, but I'd like to maintain the schools.
And just yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. So now, I'm hoping you can talk a little bit more about any specific changes you might want to see. And if you don't want to see any, tell us a little bit about why you feel that what we have in place works. And again, I'll start with Ebony.
Well, my son benefited from selective enrollment schools. He attended Disney Magnet, and he also attended Northside College Prep. What I see now is they're working less effectively for children that look like him, and it's very disturbing to me that less black and brown children are being admitted every year. And so it seems like a systemic issue. It's just continuing in that whiter, wealthier children in Chicago are more successful in our educational system, and that has been a longstanding rule and issue, and we need to find ways to eradicate that. Good schools for everyone is what we really need to invest in, and I have no problems with keeping existing schools, but we do need to add equity to the model for every school in the city.
Bruce?
Mila, one of the reasons I got into this race was because I felt a voice needed to be served for both the special enrollment magnet schools and for the charter schools. From my viewpoint, the excellent schools don't need to fight over the dollars in the current mayor's plan where he tried to emphasize neighborhood schools. We can figure out a way to bring up the lower-performing schools without cutting down those gem schools that are sort of the keystones of our city. In my, in my district, I'm across the street from Decatur Classical School, a great school. If they were to make that into a neighborhood school, a lot of parents would just move to Evanston and Willmet. It's, it's a school that's doing well, producing things. I don't think we penalize those good schools in order to make social equity. My viewpoint on equity is to bring up those schools that you want to bring up without causing those good, good schools to go down in. And I think this fighting over transportation and over the dollars to sort of squeeze these schools has been unfair and it's short-sighted.
Kate?
I, I think as a district, we've got to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time on this one. I fundamentally believe that every student should have access to incredibly high-quality, connected, joyful education experience at their neighborhood school, and I am supportive of our magnet and selective enrollment schools that have a history of producing really successful graduates. I think it's important, though, that we look at access to those programs and make sure that the student population represents the diversity of CPS. I'd also like to see us expand our programming options. So I want to see more dual-language programs, more Montessori programs, programs that parents are really voting with their feet, and we're getting an abundance of applications too. So let's make sure that we're expanding. So let's make sure that we're expanding those programs for the district.
And Maggie?
Yeah, so, I mean, in terms of specifically changes to attendance boundaries or school choice or any of these policy issues we talk about. And I think we saw this problem with the way we rolled out the new needs-based funding model, which I very much support, is that one-size-fits-all application of anything is not going to work in a city with this level of differences across schools, with this level of diversity and inequity, honestly. So what works at one school is not going to be the same. It's not going to be successful necessarily at another school. I think we really need to make sure that when we write and build policy, that it is very transparent and it has opportunities for appeals and that those are transparent, right? We can see and understand why School A gets rejected in their appeal for additional special education team members and School B gets granted that appeal. All of those things are really critical to making sure that our schools can be the best that they can be.
Thank you all for these very detailed and substantive responses. I guess that's the beauty of having geeks on the stage.
I think we agreed on nerds.
Nerds, yeah, yeah. Sorry about that, nerds. A couple of you mentioned charter schools. As I'm sure you all know, in recent years, the district has stepped up scrutiny of charter schools, including closing some campuses such as Urban Prep. I wanted to ask you if you are in favor of, in some cases, ending charter school agreements, understanding that that effectively leads to a school closure. Bruce, we'll start with you this time.
With me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I've been outspoken on the fact that I believe the charter schools have proven their value. Overall, they've done a very good job. Schools like New Hope and other schools are looking to expand and they could actually take over some of the underutilized school properties that are almost empty at this point. I think it's been a great partnership of private and public entity, which we really should foster. And the products of those schools undoubtedly have been, you know, it speaks for itself, the people that have gone on to college and done very well. I am not in favor of squeezing out or ending the licenses of future charter schools. I think it's unfair that they're being scrutinized in a way that puts them at risk. And I think they've been one of the good solutions for our city. And we should only look at expanding it versus reducing it.
Kate?
Yeah, so we, as you mentioned, have over 100 charter schools across the city, over 50,000 CPS students in charter schools. So this is a core responsibility of the board, to hold charter operators accountable for delivering a really high-quality education to our students. So that is what I believe my responsibility is first and foremost. And so I think that charter schools need to be held to the same high standards as our district schools. And I think if a charter school is underperforming, we should look really closely at that charter operator and start first with a mindset of support. Because I want those families and those students to have the support they need to gain access to a high-quality education. And I'm fundamentally opposed to school closures, but I think that accountability piece is really key.
Maggie?
Yeah, I mean, I think regardless of where you land ideologically on the benefits of charter schools, that in this city, right now, many of our schools, charter schools have become the community school. They have become the neighborhood school. They are embedded in the fabric of CPS at this point. And at the end of the day, I am vehemently opposed to closing or consolidating schools. I think it is deeply traumatic, that it is disproportionately negatively impactful, particularly on Black communities, but Black and Brown communities writ large. Anybody that sends their kids to their neighborhood school knows that schools are more than just buildings. This is not brick and mortar, right? These are safe spaces. These are community spaces. These are places where we all come together. And they need to be sustained where they are. I think we, I would like to see a lot more uniformity of oversight of charter schools. I want there to be LSEs at every charter school. I would like there to be uniform practices for expulsion and disciplinary action against students, in particular, when they have become this de facto neighborhood school. I think by taking that role, they also take the responsibility to admit and educate and be responsible for and accountable to every student and family and community that they serve.
Ebony, would you be in favor of ending charter agreements in some cases?
Yes. I think there should be a plan, though. I would not want to immediately close any schools. I think that charter schools have inherently wanted to turn a profit. And that is a problem. I think that we've seen charter schools be established the first two, three years. They do very well. When they become less profitable, they get disinvested in. And like you said, Maggie, Black and Brown students are really feeling the brunt of that. I think that if charter schools want to participate with public dollars, they need to also regulate so that they're doing the things that public schools are doing. Their teachers have the same certifications. The curriculum is unified. There is access to unionizing if they'd like to. And until those standards are met, we need to figure out an exit plan because they get to operate like cowboys in our system and we pay for it.
Okay, thank you all. Next, I have a couple of questions for you having to do with equity. We'll start with Kate this time. There are some schools in the district that have seen an uptick in English learners in the last couple of years. And some of them are really not well-equipped to serve them with bilingual staff and programs. What do you see as the short- and long-term solution to help these students as they're coming into the district?
Yeah, so in the second district, we have a long history of serving many English-language learners, but we've also had a lot of newcomer families. And so this is a topic that's really, I think, near and dear to all of our hearts. I think first and foremost, we have a shortage of certified teachers for bilingual education. And so I'd like to see us incentivize our current teaching staff to get certified because I think that's going to give us more flexibility in our staffing. And I want to continue to champion investments in the Teach Chicago initiative, which is, you know, CPS's comprehensive strategy to build a high-quality, diverse workforce and the best in the nation. So I think board members need to champion our talent strategies. And then another piece of this that feels really important, especially for our newcomer population, is giving schools the support that they need for students who have had an interrupted education, which is the case with a lot of our new arrivals. And those students need, you know, counseling. They need trauma-informed practices. And I think it's really important that we take that into consideration when we're looking at schools' needs.
Maggie?
Yeah, so this is obviously deeply personal to me. My kids are in a school that has a dual-language English-Spanish program and then has a gen ed track that is really an ESL track because there's 28 languages spoken in the homes in addition to Spanish. You know, I've sat on our LSE for eight years. The first six years, every year, I approved a rapidly declining budget. We lost teachings positions. We lost staff roles. We lost special education team members over and over and over again. And that's a lot to take on as a person that's sort of signing off on that document with very little control over the outcomes. The last two years, we've been very lucky to welcome a significant number of families from Afghanistan and then from Central and South America, which has resulted in about $250,000 more a year at my kid's school. That's really good, right? That is a good outcome. We're bringing diversity. We are welcoming communities. I think everything about it is great except for the delay. So we get the families and the students and months and months and months later, we get the funds to support them. That is what resulted in my first-grade daughter having six teachers last year. It was a very difficult year as a result. That's all to say that I think the school board needs to look at some policies around administrative and emergency preparedness, to have some mechanisms to provide relief to schools that are admitting students more rapidly. Because if the funding can come more quickly and be there with us and we can hire right away, then a lot of those challenges and a lot of those delays in serving students arriving and its impact on the whole school, all of those things are solved.
Yes, we need to support teachers that want to get ESL endorsements and make it easier. We need to have relationships with universities and community partners. We need to have people in the building every day with children that can understand them and that they can speak to. As a manager of the parent mentor program, I got to witness many Venezuelan and Mexican monolingual Spanish speakers support our schools and drives and build the confidence of children and give them security. It's going to take a long time for us to staff at the level that is necessary in the Northside Schools of Chicago. Our children speak 60, 70 different languages. They all need to be seen and heard and given confidence. And so we're going to have to get very creative. We're going to have to use a lot of partners. And we're going to have to know where the need is and address it. You know, having relationships with people in the community. I hear what languages we need. I hear what people want translated. I know that this is a problem way across the board. It's a generations-old problem.
Bruce?
You know, one of the things that makes Chicago great is its history of immigrants as a long-term resident that goes back, as you said, five generations. I love this city. When I ran my business, I spent time in all the different neighborhoods in the city. You know, we have different ethnic backgrounds in so many different neighborhoods, 77 different neighborhoods. And it's worked over the years because we figured out how to both mainstream kids and also adapt to their needs, okay? So we're not a melting pot. I believe we're a stew, you know? And we need to encourage that cultural diversity. And I can tell you, tandem, we had 60% of our employees were Black or Brown and we had a lot of Spanish-speaking people because a lot of our manufacturers were Spanish-speaking. And if you know anything about HR or benefits, it's very complicated to understand it in any language, but you certainly have to do it in their natural language to understand HMOs, PPOs, and all that kind of stuff, right? So I think we do have to figure out a game plan of how to communicate with these kids in a language and also by also mainstreaming them into, so that they can be prepared to go on to high school and college where they may not be given all of these different language opportunities. So I think we've done it in the past. We're a great city. We figured it out. I believe we can figure it out with all the new immigrants coming in as well and all these different ethnicities. We will figure it out. And we just put a game plan together.
Okay. As one of you mentioned, the district has added thousands of new positions in recent years since the pandemic. Some positions in some schools have been tough to fill and the district is contending with some vacancies at the beginning of the school year. So I wanted to get your take on policies and practices that you think could help the district recruit and retain more teachers, particularly teachers of color and particularly teachers in some hard-to-staff positions such as in special education. And I think we're back to starting with you, Maggie.
So I think that we've got a very clear set of policy directives, policy suggestions around creating a pipeline for educators of color, Black educators in particular, from partners like CTU, yes, and from other educational institutes, you know, hiring pipelines through Chicago State University. And other proposals like that have been public facing on websites and in reports for a long time. It's more the will and the caring enough, I think, to actually execute on those and prioritize those. When we talk about the Black education workforce, basically, every policy reform movement of the last two decades has eviscerated our Black educator workforce. Renaissance 2010 and the opening of charter schools, 200 charter schools, which resulted in the closing of a number of community schools, reduced our Black educator workforce by more than half. You know, this is not new information. I think that we just collectively, historically, have not cared enough to make it a priority. And I really do think that that is what it's going to take to execute on those things.
Ebony?
Expand, grow your own teachers. I'm on the board of Grow Your Own Teachers and it's a scholarship program. And it's really important to consider non-traditional students in this order, you know? SICA's, paraprofessionals, those who know our schools, those who live in our neighborhoods would make excellent teachers. And so that's what Grow Your Own strives to do. We need to really build sustainability in our school system, which means people who know the work before they come to it, people who know the community before they stay in it. I think that would help a lot with keeping teachers. We also need to consider counseling and mentoring mechanisms. Everybody needs their hand held, especially in a work like that, where it's hard work, where it's very emotionally draining and hard to do. We need to make sure we have strong relationships with historically Black colleges, also with Latinx-heavy-population colleges, right? Because we have to give them reason to want to come here and teach. And if we say, hey, we have, you know, neighborhoods that you would love to live in, we have counseling, we have mentoring, we have a long tradition of having teachers of color. I had many teachers of color. And I couldn't help but recognize that my son had fewer than I had. And I think we're going backwards in that. There's been so much research that says, you know, the farther away from the teacher, the student is farther away from the teacher's experience, they're more likely to be suspended, they're more likely to be given lower grades, and they're seen more as a threat. So we need to bring communities closer together. Our student body and our teacher body are not lined up in a way that we can be successful going into the future. And we're going to continue to lose teachers who have not lived the experience of our children.
Bruce?
You know, having served on a number of boards, I look at this as a businessman, you know? What is the problem here? And I think if I was on the board, which hopefully I will be, I would form a subcommittee to look into the issue of why we don't have enough teachers, why we're having a hard time filling these roles. It would start with looking at pay structures, looking at other cities. Has Detroit got the same problem? Cleveland, New York? What's, is it endemic in Chicago? You know, Chicago is the third-highest-paying district overall of all the major metropolitan cities in the U.S. So I want to look at the issue. Why has the CPS population decreased almost 30% since 2000? I want to analyze the problem, understand, is it a national problem? Is it just Chicago? If it's just Chicago, what are we doing wrong? And to tackle that problem, I think there's a solution, whether it's incentives to get kids to study teaching, if it's to do more program of apprentice programs. What do we need to do? But I think we can solve this problem, but we have to look at it in a more macro sense, which is what's really causing the issue? And I believe the teachers get a decent salary. If we give them a good job environment, we give them good retirement benefits, we should be able to attract young people into this profession.
Kate?
So I think we are thinking really strategically about this as a district in terms of how to grow our teacher pipelines, specifically how to grow our teacher pipelines from communities of color. A piece of this that I want the district and the board to continue thinking about is how do we retain those teachers? Because teacher burnout is one of my number-one concerns. I'm a former classroom teacher, special education teacher, and it's a really difficult job. And I want to make sure that we are pouring on the support across the continent. And I want to make sure that we are pouring on the support across the continuum of educator experience. So, we know that a teacher in their first one, two, and three years needs a particular type of support, and we have in the data to show when we typically lose people. So, I think we should be really using the data to help us layer on supports for our teachers. I'm particularly worried about burnout for special education teachers as well. We have a staffing shortage in special education. We also have more special education teachers leaving our district. So, that needs a double click at a board level.
Thank you. Next, I have a couple of questions having to do with the district's campuses. As we mentioned already, because of the arrival, primarily because of the arrivals of migrant families, we've seen a modest uptick in enrollment the last couple of years. But clearly, that has not made up for significant enrollment declines over the past decade. That has meant that some schools are serving a fraction of the students that they were designed to serve and they used to serve. And that makes it very challenging to provide students with all the programs and support staff that they need. So, I was hoping you all could talk a little bit about how to balance the district's current enrollment with its current facilities. And we'll start with Ebony this time.
I think there are some misguidance around utilizations and ratios and building size and how many children. Also, I think that there's an issue around what do we do with these buildings that are closed? I mean, we're still paying lights and security for all the 50 buildings that have been closed. And, you know, the morale of the neighborhood goes down. I think that investing in our neighborhood schools will bring a lot of our population back. You know, making sure that kids are well-invested in will bring the community up, will create more safety, will create more employability. I think it's about investing in our children early and everywhere that is going to improve the numbers in these buildings. And I think that disinvestment only brings us more uncertainty, more violence, more harm. So, we really need to think about harm reduction when we think about closing schools.
Bruce?
Again, I'm data-driven. And so, since I've put myself in this race, I've asked for a lot of data, and I've actually been studying some of the utilization. And it's obvious, a school like Douglas that has 60 kids and it's built for over 1,000, it's not, and none of them are graduating at reading-level standards. So, we need to look at it, do a study, and figure out how we can best utilize the schools. It could be that we could rent those schools out to magnet schools or to special enrollment schools or to charter. In some areas, we can actually incorporate those kids into that school, which would be better for them. I wouldn't want to go to a school that is just 60 kids. I will say, one of the things that has sort of separated me from my worthy opponents here is that there seems to be a very emotional issue about closing schools. Interestingly enough, I grew up in the Highland Park School System, and it's certainly a wealthy area, very good school system. But I was the end of the baby boomer era, and we closed schools. And I drive back there, and I see schools now that are childcare centers or youth centers or, you know, and Evanston is going through that right now. I just believe that this emotional issue of closing a school, it's a reality if there's declining numbers. It's good for the students eventually, it's good for the parents, it's good for the finances. We have to figure a way, just to make a decision like we've done, no school closings until 2027. I feel that's not good aboard governance. And eventually, we need to look at data and make smart decisions about what we do with these schools that are underutilized.
Kate, where do you stand on all of this?
So, we're facing some demographic headwinds that are a reality in our city. We've lost a significant portion of our Black population over the last decade, and that's directly attributable to how livable the city is. So, there's some macro conditions that I think go beyond just CPS that we need to work on affordability, transit access, access to high-quality jobs. All of those play into the fabric of our city. But I think when it comes to CPS, strong schools build strong communities. And so, I'd like us to invest in our schools and think about what programming is going to attract families. So, my son is going to enter CPS next year, and I'm really excited to send him to our neighborhood school. It has a teaching garden, it has a fine arts magnet certification. There's a lot that attracts me to that school. And so, when I think about investing in programming, I think we should go to the community and see what types of programming they want. And I know for certain, we've heard from the community, more dual-language programming, more IB programming. And so, I think that's how we attract people back to CPS.
One more, I'm sorry.
So, I think this question sort of illustrates why it is so important to have both lifelong Chicagoans and folks that have been in CPS fighting for our kids for many, many years. Because most of us who have been in this fight have already seen the utilization data. We know it like the back of our hands. It is not uniformly applied. This is not new information. It was not transparent. It was not trustworthy in any way. And I think that we take for granted the broader historical context and how important it is to keep all of those things in mind at a time when we are in desperate need of revenue. An under-enrolled school does not have to be an underutilized school. Disney rents its rooftop to a telecommunications company to generate revenue. We need to start innovating. We need to start thinking about new ways to bring these buildings to the community and to programs and to fill some of the gaps that are already existing around childcare or healthcare or any of the numerous issues, therapy and trauma care. These are public buildings, they are community centers, and there are any number of partnerships that could make them assets, like net positives, instead of just taking this old-school way, getting five minutes to look at utilization data because it's the first time you've occurred to you to look at CPS and assuming you know what is going on. I don't think that makes us emotional. I think that makes us logical and just better informed.
Did you want to briefly respond to that, Bruce? Or should we move on to our next question? I'll ask you one more campus facilities-related question, and we'll just do 30 seconds on this. And I apologize because it's a complex question where we can probably spend the whole forum talking about it. But we are running a little short on time. So, if you could try to address it just briefly, that'd be great. So, the district's capital planning has been criticized, I think, in the past and leading up to now in not having a very solid system for figuring out how to prioritize repairs and facilities projects, and in many cases, putting off repairs that are becoming increasingly pressing. But those repairs are expensive. And so, I was hoping to hear just a little bit from you on how to make the district's approach to planning and taking care of repairs work better. And let's see, is it, Bruce, is it your turn to start first? Kate?
Is it Kate?
I can start first.
All right.
So, I think it's really important that we prioritize district-wide health and safety risks first. So, asbestos and lead abatement, hazards, like having rats in the building. So, and our district's high school has rats in the building. McPherson Elementary School has six water fountains with lead levels way over the standard. So, I think those things need to be the priority. And I'm okay with it being anywhere in Chicago public schools because I think we have to think about this globally and prioritize the health and safety of all of our students.
Okay. Maggie?
Yeah, I think that's right, that we need to be prioritizing based on urgency and immediacy. Anyone who is a homeowner or a condo owner or any of those things understands those things can become much worse and more expensive very rapidly. I do think we need transparency. I think transparency is really the core to all of this. The capital budget in particular has been incredibly opaque. There's been no explanation, no community meetings, no opportunities for feedback or input. And then, also, a brand-new approach to our contracting out for regular maintenance. I think ending the Aramark contract was a great first start and that we need to continue in that vein and bring those roles and those positions back under the oversight of our principals and our LSCs to make sure that, you know, we're not paying through the nose for services that aren't being provided.
Ebony?
I think we do need to consider health. I think a lot of our teachers and students are made sick by the schools that are 100 years old. I think that we need someone to assess every building that's probably not associated with the district, independent person. And I think that we definitely need to look into our contractors and make sure that there's a real vetting and a real negotiation involved and not just friends and favors. I think this is the exciting part about having an elected school board, is that we get to expose all the relationships and we get to identify where we can cut costs and not have the baggage of who that person is and what they've done for us in the past. I think this is top of mind. I think there's so many environmental dollars out there in the government right now that we should be accessing to green our schools up and to create community jobs for parents.
Hey, Bruce?
So, you know, in the global sense, this is really one of my core issues that having gone through Northwestern's Boardify thing and how to build great boards, can you imagine if we had out of the 21 people, a contractor, somebody that ran a big contracting firm as one of the board members? The boards that I've been on have been diversified. They've had business people and lawyers and technology people. This board, unfortunately, in most of the districts, we're talking about teachers, okay? And so, again, we need experts. We need to have, you know, to understand how we can utilize and repair. And the way it's been done up till now, it's a very political thing, it's been said up until now. And we need to end that sort of political hand-wringing and make it a board of professionals that will be efficient and get things done. And therefore, you know, from my perspective, I'm the one that didn't support the mayor in the current thing, and I feel like the CTU has been too close. The fact that they're determining the board in the middle of negotiations is just not healthy. So, to build a quality board to make these capital decisions, you need to have diversification and freedom and true independence from the political powers that be.
Okay. We'll move on to a question about District 2. And this is something that applies to some extent across the board, across the district. But particularly in District 2, we have seen a recent decrease in the portion of students who qualify for free and reduced-priced lunch. And that's an issue that affects CPS's funding at the state and federal level. What is your sense of what's driving this trend specifically in District 2? And what are the implications for its schools and for CPS more generally? Maggie?
Sure. I think District 2 schools are still overwhelmingly, with the exception of, I think, three elementary schools and five high schools, majority free and reduced lunch schools. My, the school my kids tend, Hibbert Elementary, is 72% free and reduced lunch population. You know, I think there is some more complex, like systems-wide, city-wide issues around gentrification and housing access and increase in rent prices. There are also some great things around reduced unemployment and people doing better who are from our communities. It's always going to be a difficult balance. It's always going to be something that a school board certainly can't address on their own. But I think ensuring that we have folks who are members of the communities that are still struggling, that are folks that come from and understand the direct lived experience of being in a school that faces the problems of a majority low-income population is going to be really critical to having representative leadership.
Ebony?
I think we've seen this trend coming for a while, and a lot of it is affordability. I think that housing is a huge crisis in a lot of our neighborhoods, and we're going to have to build in structures to support all of our families if we want to continue to have diverse ethnically and diverse economically communities. And so, I really love a sustainable school model that allows for the school to become a hub, that offers programming and resources for parents. While we're lifting up the children, we need to think about how to improve economic conditions for parents so that they can maintain in our communities and sustain our communities. I love being from Rogers Park because it's always been economically and culturally diverse. I don't want to lose that. I don't want people to start becoming all the same flavor because, you know, this one criteria we can afford it becomes the norm. And so, we really have to figure out how to support folks where they are and identify programming and resources for each school in each community. Because even in the same community, there are different needs in each school. But we have to support parents as well.
Bruce?
So, I find this very interesting, is my role is the 54th Ward Commitment. I actually spent time in some of the schools in my ward and found out that one of the big issues for students, especially the lower-income students, was that there was a need for halal and kosher food. And so, we went down to Stringfield, we tried to pass a bill that would incorporate this into the program. It did not pass. I had a conversation with Chris Welch just a week ago, and he told me in the veto session, it should get passed. But, you know, kids have different dietary needs. There's a lot of allergy things. It's complicated when you really think about it, especially as Ebony said, we're in very diversified neighborhoods with a lot of people with different dietary needs and structures. And I think we can do it. And it needs some extra state help and legislation to help us provide customized food plans for students because hungry students are not going to perform well. And we have to make sure that it's fair and just for all students to be able to get equitable lunch programs.
Thank you. Kate?
Yeah, I think you're speaking to a very real trend across neighborhoods in the second district where we've seen the socioeconomic status change over the last 20 years, and that has driven school-level budgets. So, we're getting less of those Title I dollars from the federal government, less dollars from the state budget for those schools. But one thing that I want to point out is, you know, the majority of our schools in the second district still have a lot of needs. And so, a school, for example, like Budlong Elementary, where they have seen the number of students with free and reduced lunch tick down, they're still serving over 30 home languages, and they're still fighting for the basics, for having, you know, an after-school program, for having an art teacher. And so, one thing I want to be mindful of is that CPS needs to serve families of all income levels. I think this is a fabric of the city issue. And so, I don't want us pitting our schools against each other. I want us thinking about how do we serve the needs of each school community as effectively as possible.
And we'll wrap up with a quick, kind of tricky question. And sorry, Ebony, but we'll start with you again. If you weren't running in this race, would you vote for one of your competitors? And which one would that be?
You know, there's still 30 more days, and so, I will not answer that. But I will say that it's been an experience to be in this race, and I just feel so excited to be the first elected school board. There's so much energy around being in the first round.
Bruce?
I think I've already answered this. I had the opportunity to interview many of you when I was just serving on our board to pick candidates. And from my perspective, as nice as everybody is here, I think that we need separation from the CTU and the mayor and some of the other forces. I've actually told Kate that, you know, that her, even though she is on the progressive side and has supported the mayor originally, at least she at least has distanced herself to some degree. to some degree with that independence. And I believe that that's the most important thing right now, is that we get a board after all the shenanigans of the last week. It just proved out what I've been saying for a year and a half, which is we need independence and we need separation. So, you know, I would say I would have voted for Kate.
Kate, we'll go to you next.
Well, thanks, Bruce. Bruce actually didn't interview me, so I just want to clarify that. We did not meet before he got into--
She met with the community.
Yeah, before he got into the race. So I don't think you had familiarity with my background and the classroom and the private sector, also nonprofit leadership and certification and education finance. So, but I do really agree with something you've said, which is this independence piece. I think we're living in a moment right now where the mayor has made a rapid and rushed decision to appoint new board members. And I'm really worried about what this means for stability of the district. And so I think the independence piece is independence from special interests, including the teachers' union, including the charter lobby, and including any machine politics. And I think I'm the candidate that brings that to the table.
But if you weren't running, who would you support?
I think in terms of background, I would support Ebony. My concern is the level of involvement with CTU and Ebony's campaign. But I think she has a terrific background for the board. And I, in fact, love to serve with her on the board.
Maggie?
Yeah, no, I appreciate this question. I think that there has been some misunderstandings and misrepresentations around all of these things. I'm a fully-independent candidate. I have not expected money from Lee or other charter interests. I have not accepted money from-- I did seek CTU's endorsement. I did not get it at the time. I don't know that I would do that again today in this moment, given some of the most recent decisions that are coming down. I think it's much more complicated than black and white, and I tend to live in some of the nuance. But, you know, I think it's really important to understand that I would want to vote for someone who is a current CPS parent. I would want to vote for someone who is not taking funds from Lee and out-of-state tech executives like Kate or who isn't totally disjointed and disconnected from the CPS system in our community, like Bruce. So I would like to vote for myself. But if I weren't running, I would probably vote for Ebony as well.
All right.
Ebony? One thing I'd like to add, though, you do come from a very politically-connected family, Maggie. And I think that's important for voters to know, that your dad was, you know, the president of the state senate and has been highly involved in your campaign and contributed significantly.
Absolutely. I think it's worth noting that my retired parents have been very supportive of me. I'm very lucky. But to imply that that somehow makes me beholden to a past policy agenda that no longer exists, I think is really disingenuous. So just to be clear on that front.
And I'd like a second. I am the people's choice, and I have endorsements from JCUA Votes, AMP, One People's Campaign, lots of organizations who represent many, many members, SEIU73. And so I just want to say, CTU is not my only endorsement. Thank you.
Should we wrap it up here? Just the things are getting more interesting. Well, thank you so much, Maggie, Ebony, Bruce, and Kate, for joining us today. We really appreciate your time. I know it's been grueling to run for school boards. And so I'm glad you were able to make it. Thank you for those who tuned in to this inaugural Chalkbeat School Board Candidate Forum to learn more about the people who are running in District 2. You can find our voter guides and additional resources at chalkbeat.org/Chicago. And we thank, again, our partners at WBEZ, Chicago Sun-Times, and Block Club Chicago for working with us on developing these guides. Special thanks to Tiana Van Gundy at Field Events for planning and hosting these forums, and to BPM Film for the video and audio production. Also, thanks to our engagement team at Chalkbeat and to the team at the Chicago Bureau. Our managing editors are Eric Gorsky and Carrie Malago. Our editor-in-chief is Sarah Darville. For Chalkbeat, Chicago, I'm Mila Kumpalova.